Chair Hart, members of the board. Departmental item number one is from the County Executive Office. It is a hearing to consider recommendations regarding a coronavirus disease 2018 COVID-19 update.
Thank you. CEO Mia Sato, do you want to introduce this item?
Board members, as you know, every board agenda, we are providing you the latest information we have on our COVID response, and so I'm going to hand it over to our Public Health Director, Dr. Von Dorenozo, and I think, are you able to get the screen up? There you go. Thank you.
I was looking for the pointer.
Okay.
Dr. Dorenozo, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good morning. My weekly update, it's a little dense this week, so bear with me. I want to start off by, again, showcasing the new and improved data information site, and you can access that at publichealthsbc.org/dashboard. And there, we have graphics that captures total cases, active cases, cases by age groups, and cases by geographic areas. It's a really neat portal because for those who'd like to calculate cases in terms of percentages, you can hover over the icon and you can get a percentage of testing that's positive, that's negative. The situation status as of, oops, the wrong date, but as of four six at 12:00 PM, we have 192 cases confirmed, 34 hospitalization, and unfortunately, two deaths, and 42 fully recovered cases. I wanted to start by also giving the landscape of our current hospital beds. So, right now, in our county, we have 376 med search beds and 91 ICU beds. These are regularly licensed beds, and we're operating at about 40% capacity. And of the number of ventilators available, meaning not in use, from our ReadyNet platform this morning, there are 50 still available. Regional characteristics relevant of COVID-19. We have an older population, roughly 15% of our residents are over the age of 65. And so, why this is important, older age groups we are seeing in literature are more likely to get COVID-19 and are more likely to have serious health impacts from that infection. And, a good thing, we, our county has lower population density as compared to, say, New York, or San Francisco, or LA, and that will be a strength and asset as we manage COVID-19. Okay. So, before I launch into our modeling, I want to give a word of caution. Modeling, whatever model you look at, they're really based on real-time data, and so the models that I'm about to show you are, were accessed with data from the sixth. And at any given time, when you run models for real, with using real-time data, you get different results. So, what I'm showing to you today looks a lot different than what I shared with you last week, and will most likely look different next week. In terms of projections, this is a very fluid situation. Long-term projections may not give us the precise data that we're looking for because we don't know, there's a lot of uncertainty around how COVID-19 infection rates happen, the transmission, and even the, how do we gauge the social distancing measures? So, these are just caution, as I share models with you, that they are not engraved in stone, that they're fluid, and they may change from day to day, given our different number of cases and infections and hospitalization rates. So, the Penn model is a model that we have been recommended by the California Department of Public Health. So, these are the variables I'd like to walk you through that we input into the model in order to get the graphics that I'll be showing you. We input in the current number of people hospitalized due to COVID-19. And when we ran this model, it was 27. Doubling time, it's six to seven. Current hospitalized patients, 27. Social distancing is a gauge of what percentage reduction in social contacts moving forward. Hospitalization rate, the state recommends five to 20. We're using 10% as a middle. ICU percent of total infections, state recommends 1% to 5%. And based upon our local clinical experts, we are inputting 3% in. Ventilated percent, meaning the number of people on ventilators, anywhere from 1% to 5%, and we base, again, on local information, are landing on 2%. Average length of stay in the hospital, the state recommends seven days, and it is the default of the model. Average days in ICU is nine days, and that's the default of the model. Average days on the ventilator is 10 days, although, we have seen 11 days, but we're keeping an eye on that. Hospital market share, this is 100%. This is really assuming that everyone who gets sick in Santa Barbara County will seek care at Santa Barbara County Hospital. Regional population, 450, and currently known regional infections, that's 174.
Not everybody that's sick is going to go to a hospital.
So, using the Penn model, this is a rough estimate of what we can anticipate. And again, this model, typically, this model is to be run at 100 days, but to get a complete bell curve, I ran it for 200 days. So, the preciseness of move, going beyond the 100 days may be a little off. So, on the, the first is 40%. So, if we had 40% compliance with our social distancing, you get this nice brown curve that's pretty high. And here, at 40% social distancing, we're anticipating that on June 25th, we will peak with our hospitalization census, right here. And on that day, or a day after, on the 26th, the ICU census will peak at 768, with ventilation peaking, needing 566 on June 27th. So, the brown is, if we assume that 45% of our county residents are adhering to our social distancing guidelines, we see a little bit more of a flattened curve as we anticipated. So, here, on the brown curve, hospitalization will peak on 682 on July 16th, with census peaks at 438 on July 17th, with census, with ventilated census peaking at 323 on July 18th. The blue line is the 50%, if 50% of our county were to adhere to social distancing measures, we see an even further flattening of the curve. So, here, we see a peak at, further out, on August 20th, with hospitalized at 274, with census peaking at 176, and with ventilated census peaking at only 130. If we are, if we are really ambitious, and we could see even a 5%, so what would a 5% increase in our social distancing gain? Right here, way low, it's practically invisible. It's this really flattened line below. So, I wanted to show this to demonstrate the, really, the power of social distancing and all our health officer orders, and this is what we're attempting to do. Later on, I'll show you why this is critical, because this will be layered on top of our system's capacity at current time. Again, breaking it down, the graphs that I just shared with you. So, that was the Penn model. So, this is the University of Washington model. So, this model is what we are seeing on the national level. This is the model that, this is the model that frequently the White House will display in their press briefing, as well as multiple states will display in their press briefing. And again, just to demonstrate, this is what it looks like on the national front, but even, this was updated a couple days ago, and from one rendition to the next, as they, as we get more data, and as we fine-tune the model, we see a, an update representing a 46% decrease in hospital census. So, what that tells me is that as we refine our models with more data, we get better predictions, and the resource requirement is not as great as when we anticipated at the beginning of the COVID-19 response a month ago. I can't believe it's been a month, but it's been a month. So, what might be more interesting is looking at the University of Washington model and how it plays out in California. Again, this model runs states and national. So, we see that on March 19th, our governor issued a stay-home order, educational facilities closed on the 19th, nonessential services closed on the 19th, and travel was severely limited. So, this model anticipates that on April 14th or 15th, that's the peak need for resources. And given all the efforts that our state governor, government has done, we don't see in this model a need for bed shortage or ICU bed shortage, but we do still see a need of ventilators. So, what does that mean for Santa Barbara County using this national and state model? Well, this model doesn't allow for the variables to be changed, so the best that we can do is estimate based on our percentage of population compared to the state. So, we have about a 1.13% population of the state. So, if you calculate back the peak hospitalized census, we would, we're anticipating 140 on roughly the 26th of Wednesday, I'm sorry, April 26th, and this is similar to what we had predicted a week ago. Peak ICU census at 21, peak ventilator needs at 17, and anticipated number of deaths by August the 4th around 57. So, this is extrapolation of a national and state model. So, what does this all mean, running models? Well, we run models because we want to, even though the data may not be precise, we want to get a gauge on how this, these models can assist us in doing hospital surge planning, in standing up alternate care sites, in acquisition of medical equipment. So, the current surge capacity in our county, these are beds at the five hospitals in our county, and these are all, have been verified by the hospitals in question. So, we're looking at, in terms of med surge capacity, we have pre-existing means, this is what the number of licensed beds there are in the county. So, if we set aside 40% of the number, the 376, and the remaining 60% would then be available for COVID-19 response, so we're looking then at the 226. Similarly, with ICU, we have 91 beds licensed for ICU, and if we take 60% of that, we get 55. So, altogether, including 60% of licensed beds and the capacity of the hospitals to turn different spaces in the hospitals for med search or for ICU, we get a total of 699. So, this number, again, has been verified by the CEOs and their staff at the three, at the three hospital systems. So, and that's a good thing. This was not what, we did not know this a week ago. So, in close partnership, close conversations, multiple conversations, we're able to land at this number around 699. And I'm anticipating this number to even go up a little bit more as the hospitals work to create space or bed space within their four walls. So, remember the graph earlier? So, I overlaid on top of this, we just talked about beds. So, the brown curve, this is the hospitalized census. The next lower one is the ICU, and the lowest one is the ventilated census peak. So, this is at 40%. Going across, this is the number of hospital beds, the med search beds in our system. The red dotted line going across is the ICU beds, and the purple dotted line is the number of ventilators in the system. So, the difference that you may see, you've seen 84, 85, and now we're landing on 97. And again, and this is on the, on the behalf of the hospitals, and to take what we have given them to retrofit or to do preventive maintenance, and this also includes pediatrics. So, we're at 97. So, what this shows you is that at 40%, we will be exceeding this space right here, we will be exceeding the capacity for hospital beds. However, at 45%, that gap is much reduced. And then, at 50%, we are well within our current capacity of beds, ICU beds, however, not so much on the ventilation. So, what this means is that we need, as a community, to really, really be diligent in messaging physical distancing, in adhering to the social distancing orders that have been put into place.
Dr. Dorenozo, Supervisor Hartman has a question.
Yes.
Does this assume, then, that the current social distancing measures continue through August, September, October?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. And maybe at a future, maybe at a future update, I can show the models where if you, let's assume that we are at the 50%, and I'm really hoping, and I'm seeing results that indicate we're around 50%. Let's say that right here, we think that we're doing great, and then we let up. There's, there are models that can indicate, as you loosen your social distancing guidelines and mandates, the curve does not complete the bell shape going downward, but it actually can go back up. So, in terms-
Supervisor Williams.
The, I guess the question is, how should people envision what 40% versus 55% or 50% is? So, you're, you're saying you're estimating that we are achieving 50%. What, what does that mean? Does that mean that 50% of people are occasionally drifting within six feet? Or does that mean that 50% of the people are practicing the guidelines that you issue?
So, that's a great question. What we have now, in terms of gauge on how successful we've been as a community, is really looking at analytics that's available via Google, or via a Unicast, I believe, is another. So, there are apps out there that are tracking, I believe, based on cell data usage and cell, I'm not sure I understand the science behind it, but it's cell usage. And we, I've been looking at the data, and it looks like we're anywhere between 40% and 60% depending upon the day. That, given with anecdotal reports from both the sheriff's office, as well as my staff, who are driving around in the community, looking at restaurants, looking at public spaces, and not seeing the congregations, the masses of people as they typically would on any given day before COVID-19. So, earlier, I mentioned that that's the lack of preciseness in modeling. We don't have a good hardcore gauge about, is it 50%? Is it 60%? Is it 70%? And how will we know?
Got it.
So, we talked about surge planning. So, this is, this is, I have to say, this is my favorite graph because it's simple, and it shows the space that we're currently in. So, again, the brown is 40%. If we are at 40%, we will look at a peak on June 25th, and this orange, salmony space is the 500-bed gap that we had been anticipating, that you'd been hearing for a few weeks now. However, even with a 5% increase, we, if we follow this brown curve, we are well within our capacity. Our healthcare system may be challenged, but it will not get broken. And then, if we go to the 50%, we can handle it within what we currently have. And this is the, the low blue line is way down here. So, you can see visually the effects of social distancing. So, with regards to the 40%, for me, for us, our team, that's the worst-case scenario. We're at 40%, 30, 40%. So, what, what do we do? So, we want to make sure that we can have that capacity, that 500-bed capacity in the worst-case scenario. However, before we get there, what we are looking at is an immediate priority to acquire the 20 hotel bed, hotel rooms for the discharged patients meeting the criteria. So, these are low-acuity patients being discharged, they may not have a home environment that's supportive, or they may not have a congregate setting that's ready to take them back. So, by mid-April, we are planning on acquiring 80 additional hotel rooms and building the capacity to stand up 400 additional beds. We currently have the materials for 300. We're acquiring materials to stand up an additional 150. We're looking at various sites throughout the county, and we have begun doing staff recruitment. So, even at the 20 hotel bed capacity that we're needing right now, that means intensive staff, that's outside of our current response. So, that's what we've began to do. We've began recruiting medical professionals and paraprofessionals to assist us in that. Future daily data will guide us. As I mentioned earlier, the more fine-tuned numbers we input into the models, and the modelers are constantly, every three or four days, fine-tuning their tool as well. So, as we progress, I'm anticipating a more precise modeling and more precise results. Our gauge, our lever, is that when we reach 50% of our surge capacity, again, that's when we reach the 699, half of that, so that's 700. So, around 350, we will ramp up high gear and stand up what we need to stand up to support our healthcare system and our community. In terms of medical equipment, so currently, we have 97 ventilators. As I've shared previously, we have requested an additional 100 from the state. I know that the hospitals are purchasing or pursuing the purchase of vents, and we will continually ask for PPEs from our federal and state, and state stockpile. In addition to that, we are supported by philanthropic partners, and we are able to go out and explore potential vendors who may, who may offer us PPEs. So, the takeaways I'd like to share, I've shared with you two main models that everyone is using. There's great variations among these two models. Again, the, the models in use give us varied results, ranging from no surge bed need to high need. The Washington model is used by the federal government and provides only national and state-level information. The Penn Chime model is recommended by CDPH, and all models really rely on estimated social distancing compliance. I wholeheartedly, from the hard work of all our county partners, all our county teams, believe that we will be ready and prepared. Our models show a range of bed search needs from zero, in the best-case scenario, to high, to high need in not-so-good social distancing model. And realistic range is about 40 to 50% of compliance, and this is why we need, everyone needs to adhere, and not only adhere, but really hold each other accountable and share publicly. Social distancing is the key driver in keeping the rates where it's at. And knowing that, again, this is just modeling, we have a phased approach to address any of these scenarios, and we are monitoring the number of hospitalization, the number of cases, the number of availability capacity on a daily basis, and can adjust. Want to point again, everyone, to our website, publichealthsbc.org, for daily information about the coronavirus, and our community call center at 833-688-5551, as well as our Community Wellness Call Center for Emotional Support at 888-868-1649. 211 is available, and our two reference sites are www.cdc.gov and www.cdph.gov. And that concludes my update for this week.
Thank you very much, Dr. Dorenozo. And please extend our thanks to all your staff. I know everyone is working very, very hard, long hours, seven days a week, and your effectiveness is really clear and obvious, and these numbers are really encouraging, as long as folks continue doing what they need to do. Supervisor Williams and Supervisor Hartman, and any questions from North County?
Yeah, I, I have a similar takeaway to the chair, that this should be an, should be, from the public standpoint, an empowering thing to see, that people are making a difference by their level of social distancing, and that if they can keep that level of distancing or- of social distancing, and that if they can keep that level of distancing or improve that level of social distancing, then the community will have the adequate resources to meet the need, and obviously, more lives will be saved. We, I have a part of my district that's way out there in Cuyama, and I just wanted to understand if you or your folks can let us know, if local folks believe they have the, you know, the symptoms and meet one of the tiers in Cuyama, is there testing available at the little community clinic, or are they counseled to go out to Marion and so, or other locations in Santa Maria?
So we, the county, does not have a clinic out in Cuyama. It is by Central Coast. So what I would suggest is we have, our system has the ability to do telephone consults as well as telemedicine, so, and I would encourage that community member to tap into that. Cottage has a similar system. I'm not sure about Marion. And if they meet the criteria, the arrangements can be made. So our clinics do offer testing for those that meet the criteria.
Sure, and I know that the clinic isn't a county clinic out there, but it is a clinic. And so we just, so essentially, they should call Public Health and not that clinic.
Yes, and I can do follow-up with that particular clinic if you'd like.
Great. That would be wonderful to understand their level of resources.
Supervisor Hartman?
Thank you. I have a number of questions. On the radio today, I heard that there's quite a difference in ethnicity and how the COVID, especially in places like Louisiana. So I just wonder, over time, if we will keep those statistics as well?
Yes. When I saw the Louisiana, the first thing that came to my mind was also the high prevalence of chronic disease as well in Louisiana. But that is a, we will be diving deeper into our number of cases as well as our hospitalizations to see if we can spot any trends. With that, the goal is really to, how do we step up or focus our prevention and intervention efforts from a policy level, from a clinical level, from a health education level in communities that might need that extra attention? So that's why we will be looking at all of our numbers.
Thank you. I have a few more questions. So basically, we have to have the beds, we need to have the personnel, and then we need to have the equipment. It sounds like we're planning, of course, for all three, and that the equipment, the ventilators, are the limiting factor, but if we can flatten the curve, more will be produced and available. But we're looking largely at our county in isolation from how other counties throughout our country will be affected and how resources may be moved around. So as the models get better, I guess that's something to be thinking about, how does our curve relate to other curves and resources?
That's a great comment. So I wonder as well, in particular, I'm curious about how Slow's doing or how Ventura County's doing, and so those are our two closest allies. And I have seen Ventura County's projections, and they're very similar to ours.
And then, I mean, we're trying to flatten the curve, so we might get more testing, we might find out who's immune, we might have some actual treatment. I mean, I think you're giving us the model, but we're thinking about up here, social distancing through September, October, and how really difficult that would be. So I think we're kind of waiting for a breakthrough, and you're just giving us a model to, how do you plan for healthcare beds and personnel and equipment?
Right.
But how we plan for the rest of it is a really big question. Thank you.
Yes.
Are there questions from Santa Maria?
Yeah, I got a couple. Dr. Doranoso, do you expect to maintain the level of social distancing that we're talking about here in these graphs, as long as the graph goes out to November?
Personally, I know that I struggle with it. I have a family that struggles with it, so I fully understand the, how difficult it may be, especially for members of our community who live in a high-density situation. However, I'm also seeing, what worries me is seeing where there is no social distancing and the impact it has on the community in terms of severe hospitalizations, deaths, and a healthcare system that is so overwhelmed that healthy people are also affected. So do I think that, is it sustainable all the way out to November? I'm not sure. I think that it's a conversation that needs to happen in a variety of contexts and in a variety of settings so that we, as a community, can land on a solution that is doable, that protects the vulnerable members of our community as well as safeguarding our healthcare system.
Well, that's interesting that you say that, because I, you know, I get the general sense here that there's two competing overarching strategy considerations. One is the deaths and the illnesses, and the other is economic. And the economic impacts of this are getting overwhelmed by the physical or the health impacts at this point. But I'll tell you, if we go on until November one, you know, you just said it yourself, there's people that are going to be injured that don't get sick. And, you know, I just, I don't think we're balancing the needs of those people that are trying to make a living out there very well. We're, seems like we're over-focused, and maybe rightly so. You know, and I don't want to act like I have any answers, because I don't. But I just know that there's a tremendous amount of pain being loaded into the system at this time, and it's largely undetectable because everybody's sequestered in their own homes and, you know, out there in their essential businesses and stuff. And other than that, there's not much going on. And obviously, it's very difficult for people to come and give us public comment and stuff. And I suspect if it were easier, we'd be hearing more. And I think as time goes on, this is going to start wearing on people more and more. And I think we're going to be subject to a lot more demands to lift these social distancing guidelines and try to find the people who are at the highest risk and try to protect them rather than getting everybody, you know, we're kind of throwing the baby out with the bathwater at this point. And I think that the damage is going to be really deep if we try and go until November doing the same thing we're doing now. I mean, and I think that, you know, we should start those discussions sooner than later until we just sort of run it to failure or rebellion or whatever. You know, at some point, people are going to stop cooperating, and I don't think it's going to last till November. And then, you know, if we get to the point where, you know, we have to start arresting people and, you know, that's, it's not America. And I realize these are extraordinary circumstances, and you can keep this up for a while, but, you know, when you start showing people charts like this, that, you know, under the best-case scenario, we don't even get down to zero again till after November one, and that's with the fifty percent social distancing, which we're assuming we're doing now, that's not very encouraging to me, you know, from an economic perspective of the whole community here.
Supervisor Hartman?
Thank you. I have a question about slide ten. It's the U of W implications for Santa Barbara County. My question was just on the ratios. We show that our projection would be like one hundred and forty in the census for the hospital with ICUs at twenty-one. So I'm just trying to figure out how that correlates to like what we have right now, where the ratio seems to be a lot higher, where we only have thirty-four hospitalized, but nineteen are in ICU. So I'm curious how our ICU numbers look like they'll get significantly better, even as we get more patients.
Right. So I would, oh, I'm sorry. So the University of Washington model, again, is a state, is a national model, and it's for states, and the preciseness is difficult because we are one huge state with fifty-eight very diverse counties. So when they lump it all, the fifty-eight counties, into the California model, it isn't precise when we extrapolated purely using a percentage of population. So that's why I, but it is a model that is frequently used by the states as well as our federal government, so I thought I would put it in there.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I had a question about the percentage of hospital beds that are being reserved for regular hospital patients, that that is being held as a forty percent reserve capacity. And I think that makes sense. That's a very conservative, smart thing to do. But I'm wondering if that is the experience that we're having in the hospitals. It seems like anecdotally, around the country, as people are staying at home, that there is much less demand for hospital beds.
So the forty percent number, we landed based upon our conversations with all of our hospital partners. And again, when we were able to get their licensed beds and their search capacity, the big question was, but how much do you need to set aside for day-to-day, normal healthcare needs? And we all agreed on the forty percent. So it was validated by the hospitals.
Okay. And then you did, at the beginning of your presentation, have a number of caveats about the reliability and the predictability and the precision of the model as time goes on. You mentioned that, you know, there's more confidence in a shorter horizon of predictability, so, and that these models are being refined all the time, and new data is coming into the equation, and we're in real-time integrating that information. So it's probably premature to be talking about September and October and November. We're trying to concentrate on people today, what they're doing now, and from the information that you have, which is proxy information, it isn't precise. It is the cellphone data, as you mentioned, primarily from Google and Unicast that tells the relative amount of distance that has been reduced, traveling distance. It doesn't speak to how close people are together, whether they're adhering to a six-foot social distancing practice, but it's a tool, and it's the only tool that we have. And it's encouraging, and it's telling us that we're doing a good job, and that every five percent additional effectiveness in social distancing has a huge impact on flattening the curve. So I think that is really the most important message I heard today, is that social distancing works, and it can work even better if we do a little bit better job. Everybody individually doing a little bit more can make a huge difference on the impacts of the capacity of the medical system to absorb patients. Is that all?
Yes, so very aptly summarized. Thank you. My only addition to that would be, yes, these are, these models are tools, and what I'm seeing is that the next eight to ten days will tell us a lot about what we need to do differently in terms of modeling and in terms of planning.
And I know another tool that you are looking at is the practical, real-life experience that's happening in the Bay Area. They're ahead of us, and we're seeing in real-time what it is that they're experiencing, and the early indications are that that experience is consistent with what you're seeing with the modeling and the effectiveness of social distancing. So that's another data point that is encouraging and gives us insight into what we might be looking at in the future.
Yes.
Okay.
So maybe we'll bring that slide at our next update.
Thank you. Supervisor Williams and then Supervisor Hartman?
Well, I agree that it's premature to talk about November, and that the most important information that these models reveal is what a huge difference can take place between different levels of social distancing. However, I do think, you know, Supervisor Adam is right, that it's a, at some level, it is a policy question of, because destroying an economy kills people too. It does. So at some level, you have to work out as a policy matter where to balance this. And it is not just a realm for public health, it is a realm for the people that the voters elect. So I do think it is important to have that discussion at some point. My view is that if workplaces were properly equipped, if preparation were made, that more people could go back to work while maintaining a certain amount of social distancing. And that, of course, would be an important job for public health to advise employers on how that would make, and obviously, that has to do with a policy call by the state as well, since we are in their shelter-in-place order. But, you know, it is, it is a fact that economic collapse and poverty also kills people, so there is a question, an outstanding question, of how long you could close most businesses. And, you know, I think we can do it for longer. I think we should do it for longer, but the question is how long you can do it without hurting a whole lot of people. And I don't mean hurting people like making them lose a little bit of their income, I mean hurting people as in ruining their lives.
Supervisor Hartman?
Well, I have two points, I think. The first is, we do now have an additional social distancing recommendation, and that is face covering. And I commend my fellow Supervisor Williams and Yaash for showing us, as well as some people in the public today. But I think that is saying, I'm a good citizen, I'm here, I'm wearing my face covering so that I can protect other people. And so when I'm out in public, I've started to do that, and I understand there's, we didn't do that initially because we didn't want people to be confused with medical masks and take resources away from our medical personnel. But that's a beautiful color, Supervisor Williams, and we're seeing more and more of those. So I know it's for our culture, it's a difficult thing for many people, but we have to make this something that is socially commended, because it is an additional strategy that may bring that curve down faster. So that's one point. The second point is, I think we're holding on for more testing and ultimately being able to able to see who's immune, who can go back to work safely without getting sick. I, I know we have a three-tier testing strategy. Could you comment on the supplies for testing and where you see that going in our county?
Sure. So the supply for testing, we do not have an issue with testing anyone who needs to be tested on tier one. However, I do understand that there are tier two, we are beginning to do tier two. And I know that there are members of our community in tier three that would like to be tested. So the only thing about the testing that I, I worry about is that when you get the tests and you get the results that's negative, that doesn't mean that tomorrow you won't be exposed or the next day. So we, we are really sticking to our message that social distancing, good hand hygiene and being self-isolating, all of that, face mask, face coverings, all of those will really be more protective than taking a test when you are not symptomatic. On the flip side, with regards to what our efforts, so I mentioned, I think it's been maybe three weeks now that we were in pursuit of a rapid testing. And our lab director excitedly told me yesterday that he has a FedEx tracking number. So we are getting 200 rapid tests in the public health department to be able to do tier one quicker turnaround times. And I think that as a community, the healthcare system, the hospitals, as well as the outpatient clinics have all, so have an increased capacity to test. And then on the back end, with the commercial labs being able to run a higher volume of tests means that we're getting quicker turnaround times for the testing. And I know that our previous health officer, Dr. Charity Dean, is leading a task force up in Sacramento for serology testing. So for people to be able to identify if they had been exposed to coronavirus. While there's still issues around that, the lack of specificity, coronavirus as a family versus COVID, that is something that we are engaged in the daily calls and seeing how can we position ourselves to be in the waiting line to get access to those as well.
And I, one more. I mean, I think what we're trying to do is get through the surge and, and, and keep it within our capacity to handle. And then we, we started out trying to trace, I forget what the medical term is, but-
Contact tracing?
Contact tracing. And, and now we're in the mitigation phase, but if we can reduce the number, then we could get back to that, that tracing strategy. If we knew who had it, who was immune, if we had better testing. And I, I think that's kind of, that's one way we could progress and, and get ourselves out of this. But it may be, as Chair Hart suggested, premature. We do have our budget workshops coming up and that'll certainly be an opportunity to talk about some of these things. But maybe after our, our surge or high point, we really need to think about what our, what our strategies to manage the disease and get as many people back working as possible.
So while we are not doing contact tracing for the general public, for those who are in congregate settings, your skilled nursing facilities, your assisted living, your, your law enforcement, all of that, as well as essential county services. And we've, I believe, have extended to cities as well. So we're still doing contact, contact tracing in those unique circumstances so that we can protect the rest of the essential workforce.
I see that Mr. Chapchan is here as well. Would you mind telling us more about what's going on in regards to serving our unhoused population during the COVID pandemic? Thank you. Yes, would be perfect.
Absolutely.
Let me see, I don't think I have you, there you go.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair Hart and Supervisors. I've been at the, at the EOC for the last two weeks, I think, in, in charge of the operations section. And, and they're, they're taking on a number of approaches to this, and, and one of them is the shelter operations. About two and a half weeks ago, I think the county opened up a shelter in, in Santa Maria, only because the providers in that area couldn't do it at the time. They were short on staff. So we picked up the slack, opened up the shelter. It was really challenging, but we were serving a maximum of 71 people up there. So on a, on a bad night where it was raining, it's 71. On a good night, it was between 50 and 60 people that we were serving. The challenge has been staffing it, of course, just like the nonprofits. Just this Monday, Good Sam stepped up. They had hired additional staff, they trained the staff, and they stepped up and they took over the operation of the shelter in Santa Maria. Now, we're also supporting them with food, security, laundry services and cleaning services in the meantime, as they're transitioning. But they hope to at some point take on that, those tasks as well. United Way in, in North County has an outreach team. They're stepping up their outreach efforts. We helped pay for a portable shower for them, so they'll be, they're looking at sites, three, four different sites to take the shower. They're not operational yet, but they hope to be operational in the next five to 10 days. They do have the unit. They're just trying to get staffed up and, and find the appropriate shelters. We are looking at shelters down here in South County and in Mid County. It's been a challenge. We've looked at several sites. We don't quite have the partnerships we hoped we would have. We looked at a site in Santa Barbara yesterday. We're looking at a site in Goleta and several other sites that we can open up as shelters. But again, we need a partner to shelter up. And PATH has, has been, it's been encouraging to talk to PATH. I think they will step up and help us with that shelter. So we're in the process of looking for shelters now. In the meantime, we're providing food through the food bank to folks and essential services, supportive services. Be Well staff has been out there at the shelters, as has probation staff. So the full array of services that we can provide have been provided. But we're actively looking for hotels to hotel people who may be at high risk. And we're looking at, you know, just yet, today, I think we'll be talking to the Ramada Inn by the county campus and some other hotels. We've talked to Motel 6. It's just getting that contract in place and looking for staff. Again, staffing is, is just hard. That's the key. I think we'll be able to get the sites. It's, it's finding the staff. People, of course, are afraid, you know, and most of the volunteer staff that shelters have had have been older people, so they aren't stepping up.
And the funding that the county is using is the HAP and the HEAP funds.
We're using HEAP and HAP funds. We're going to exhaust those first, but I think those are reimbursable by FEMA and I think Kelly can talk to that. But everything is being traced, everything, you know, everyone's putting their time cards in, coding it to COVID-19. Every, everything that we do spend is being traced and the auditor teams are on it. So we should be able to get reimbursed, at least for 75%. And if the state declares this the emergency as well, we can get 75% of our, our 25%.
And I know that you had eight staff working 10, 12 hours a day, seven days a week.
I have to tell you, Supervisor, it's been tremendous out there. It's frustrating, but they are at it. I think we spent about 50, 60 hours a day just looking for staff and, and, and working on the homeless shelter issue. I think it's been the primary goal at this point. Some of the other issues have been kind of put on the sideline. We're also looking at the senior population and helping the senior population as well with housing and services. But the homeless issue has been, you know, the top priority.
And it's a complex issue in the sense that, you know, we have a pandemic. This isn't the normal time when we'd be trying to stand up a shelter to take care of people and all of their needs. It's a combination of doing that and at the same time, providing a safe environment in a congregate setting that wouldn't create a hotspot for the transmission of COVID-19. And there, there is an absolute real-life balance point between bringing people together in a shelter and having that potential versus them being out in the, the community, living in encampments and having that same potential. And, you know, so far, we have been lucky and fortuitous that we haven't had issues in either place, but it's not as simple as, you know, let's just bring everybody together. There are, there are real issues with that and there are differences of view. I know some of the medical community are very strongly concerned about the idea of bringing together folks in shelters. Other folks who are, you know, fierce and passionate advocates for helping the homeless, you know, want us to do more in that regard. And you're, you're trying to balance those realities and find the service level and the appropriate facilities that make this work for everybody.
You're absolutely correct, Chair Hart. It is difficult. And the goal of the task force is to reduce the spread of COVID-19 among the homeless and among the, the general population. But we're seeing that if they aren't in, in the shelters, apparently law enforcement is seeing more encampments together, so we want to try to keep them apart if we can. So the goal is really to get them in a shelter or in their separate housing if we can for the vulnerable population. But it is, it's very complex and, you know, we, we sit there and we talk about, oh, let's get a hotel. Well, wait a minute, you know, this is a population that may not stay there. There's some other issues, cleaning, housekeeping, you know, the hotel doesn't want to do. So we have to step up and try to find those as well. So it's, it's complicated, even the shelters, keeping them part. Some, some of the activities aren't, you know, if you or I were in a shelter, it wouldn't be the same as, as some of this population, but it, it's complicated.
And some, and the outreach workers are going out in the community, providing education about COVID, directing people to services, the showers, the other hand washing facilities, trying to make sure folks have as much information as possible who are unhoused and not in shelters or hotel rooms at this point.
Absolutely, yes. Showers, a blessing has gone out. They've restarted again. They have five sites that they go to. We're helping with meals out there. United Way's outreach team is also going out and they're providing meals on-site to folks who may not be in the shelters. And we also have a hygiene kit that we're providing, United Way and some of the outreach teams, so they can give them, give the homeless population some, some hygiene kits as well.
And as we get more masks, I'm sure we're going to be distributing those to folks as well, too.
Yes, yeah. That's another challenge also for the service providers is they, they need masks because I think their staff still doesn't feel safe. And I don't know how safe those masks are. I think the N95s are the most effective, but anything is better than nothing, I think, at this point.
Thank you. And then Ms. Hubbard, did you want to say something about the FEMA reimbursement?
Yeah, just our understanding or what we're hoping to get from FEMA is that FEMA would cover the 75% of eligible costs and the HEAP and HAP could be used as our local match. That hasn't been confirmed. We're still working to try to see if we can get clarity on that. But that is our goal in that funding. And then just so everyone's aware, CDAA, the California Disaster Assistance Act, hasn't been approved at this time. So it would be a 20, it's a 75% FEMA, 25% local government of eligible costs. And again, hoping to get that HEAP and HAP as part of that local match. And all of the volunteer hours and staff hours also contribute to that local match.
And by that strategy, we would potentially preserve the HEAP and HAP funds for the long-term projects that we had hoped to be doing prior to the COVID crisis and have those refunded through the reimbursement process from FEMA. Again, smart strategy. Supervisor Hartman and then Supervisor Williams?
Yes, just a quick question. A number of people have suggested remote locations for serving those without homes. And I assume it has to be central just for all the services that need to come in? Is that correct?
You're, you're correct, Chair Hart, through, through the, Supervisor Hartman through the chair. It, it is correct. They do want to be in, in the community that they are in. You know, we thought, we thought about one centralized location, but people in, in Santa Maria, some have jobs, some are in construction who don't have a place to live. Their service providers are down here. The hospitals track them. They have caseworkers. So they need to be near their caseworkers. You know, the hospital's not going to bring a caseworker all the way down to Santa Barbara if we had one site. So those are complexities as well. We do need different sites and we can't just centralize them in one location.
And, and final quick question. Are we, is there any silver lining here? Are we getting wraparound services to some of these people and helping them find ways out? Are they a part of our coordinated data entry system in this process?
Yes, they're all, they are all part of the HMIS system, so we, we have data on everyone and the wraparound services are still there. So it's all part of that system.
Supervisor Williams?
Well, I just want to encourage you that either a decentralized or some facilities are better than none. I obviously have concerns about a large number of people in one location, so I do think that there is some merit to pursuing more than one strategy. But, you know, some facility is better than none. So I hope and encourage your conversations with PATH or whatever other service provider steps up. And then I just wanted to, you know, give a, a little bit of lightness to this face, shield and mask question, which is to publicly say I, I was wrong. I went with the CDC recommendation and had a quite spirited discussion with my mother. Apparently, my mother knew better than the CDC and the President of the United States and insisted that it was the right way to go. And the CDC changed its recommendation. So I want to publicly acknowledge to the whole world that I was wrong and my mom was right.
Supervisor Hartman, did you have another question?
Oh, I just had one comment. I heard on the radio today that the New Zealand Prime Minister has declared that the tooth fairy and the Easter bunny are essential workers. And Yaash may want to know about that.
That's a nice little lightning of the moment from both of you. Thank you.
And Chair Hart, if I can add one more thing, the HEAP funds, there is a time limit on those. So with the cities, they can use their HEAP funds for this so that they don't run out of the time. So it's available.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And then any questions from Santa Maria, my colleagues and?
We don't seem to have any questions at the moment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have public comments. I think we have a number of people who would like to speak on this item. Madam Quirk?
Chair Hart and members of the board, we have five requests to speak on this item. We have two letters to be read into the record. And then we will have three requests to provide comment over the phone, to begin with Dr. Tom Hasia, to be followed by Anna Marie Gott. I will go ahead and read the first letter into the record from Cory Hayman. Dear members of the Board of Supervisors, I have three comments for today's hearing. First, I would like to acknowledge the continuing improvement in the county health department's public reporting of daily statistics on COVID-19. Thank you. Second, on behalf of myself and many other community members, I would like to express our great appreciation for allowing the beaches and trailheads to remain open. By and large, the people of Santa Barbara have demonstrated care and diligence in social distancing while spending time in our public open spaces. I applaud your faith in our community's ability to attack, to act responsibly. Finally, there have been recent reports on the actual trajectory of COVID-19 in our state and county. I encourage the board and staff to pay particular close attention to the numbers. If the trend line continues to be positive, I respectfully request that the board and staff be proactive in identifying the next steps for our county. Thank you for your consideration. Cory Hayman.
Thank you, Ms. Hayman.
And our next letter to be read into the record is from Jose A. Navariti, a resident from Solving. Good morning, honorable supervisors. I find it troubling that better care is not taken to translate the materials on the county public health website into Spanish. It is currently in Google Translate mode and makes no sense. While I understand this is only temporary, the prospects don't look good. And honestly, it's been nearly a month already. You see, there is a group of us, local court-certified interpreters, translators, public servants and officers of the state judiciary, who offered to help for free when this crisis began taking shape last month, trying to do our part as a valuable resource to the community. We have been met with disdain and indifference. Sadly, county officials decide to use bilingual staffers to translate their materials, which leave much to be desired, at best, lackluster, at worst, nonsensical. You should be relying on true language professionals actually trained and experienced as full-time linguists. Would you think of hiring people as doctors and nurses who do not possess a medical license? There is no difference here. The public deserves better. Contrary to the belief of these bilingual staffers and those that enable them, the Mexicans and other Spanish speakers in our communities are not subliterate. It is irresponsible, offensive and disingenuous to justify these shabby translations by claiming to target folks who won't understand their own language. Please reconsider your language access strategy. Otherwise, I thank everyone in the county for doing their part in keeping us all safe. Please let us do what we do best. We're here for you and all.
I think that bears a response from Ms. Nisich because I think there's some factually incorrect assertions in that comment.
Good morning, Chair Hart, members of the board. Yes, I would like to address that. In terms of our actual website, we do have it translated. The components of it that are still in Google Translate mode are those primary components that are translating directly from the CDC website and the CDPH website. We do translate all of the information that the county pulls for specific local information. We translate- the county pulls for specific local information. We translate all of that. We do have individuals currently within the JIC, represented from our court system, who have approached us. So, we do have our certified court translators as part of our joint information system or joint information center. In addition to that, we do have individuals within the JIC that have also taken extensive FEMA translating services or training. So, they have that level of translation. In addition, our lead PIO, Jackie Ruiz, is a certified Spanish translator as well. Our process for doing Spanish translation does not differ from us presenting everything in the English language. Our process is that every document receives two sets of eyes. So, if we are putting out something in English, it is looked at for consistency. If we are putting out something in Spanish, it is looked at for consistency. So, there often is a different interpretation sometimes, and then we take that to our lead PIO. So, we're very conscientious about that. We do have a disclaimer on our website, letting them, letting folks know when they do hit that button, that we are oftentimes in the process of translating, and we work to get everything up real time. In addition, I will say that because there is so much information that was coming out over the weekend due to be set up for this week, we had a number of our translators working over the weekend. So, English and Spanish could be posted at the same time. We do have a cadre of, I believe, about 11 translators, and at any one time, about three of them are working virtually within our joint information center. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, Ms. Nisich. Supervisor Hartman?
Yes, if I understood, you said that we use Google still for the state and federal? And the state, at least, doesn't have Spanish?
CDPH is done through Google Translate. Yes, ma'am. If you go to the CDPH website, there is a button that will translate the bulk of their narrative. They have a very high narrative content on theirs. However, I will also say, and I should have mentioned earlier, in order to help individuals get more direct information from both CDPH, our website, and CDC, we did post a link to the resource page. So, that is a page wherein information, and specifically infographics, you see a lot of infographics with this event. Infographics are, if you go to that resource page, and you pull down from our website, if you go to the resource page and pull down and look at CDPH and CDC, you will also see that we've linked to all the infographics, which can be seen in English, Spanish, as well as, I believe, up to 10 other languages. So, that is a real-time ready resource from CDPH and CDC, where you can get all of that information bundled in one location, in addition to everything else that is on the remainder of the website. So, that is the part that's translated from them.
Thank you, Ms. Nisich. And while you're here, why don't you also add information about the additional Spanish outreach that has been going on, that the work particularly to the Misteca and the Oaxacan communities in North County?
Yes, I'd be happy to. We've done a series, the Joint Information Center, working with our community partners and a number of individuals, I can't even list them all, have been working on a number of outreach messages to the Misteco and the Oaxacan population. Specifically, a number, I believe, as of count yesterday, 10 individual videos have been produced, and all of those have also been converted to PSAs on the radio stations, both north and south. So, we've targeted very, very specific stations. In addition, we've also been working with our promotoras. We've been working with First Five. Dr. Domenoso has been working with her outreach teams. So, we've been doing quite a bit of work in those areas as well. And we're really focusing on the Spanish radio stations through the PSAs, and we're getting additional signage up throughout key neighborhoods as well.
And that will increase and only get better as time goes on?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Our next public comment?
Yes, Chair Hart, members of the board, we will now go to our three requests to provide comment over the phone. We will begin with Dr. Tom Shaw, to be followed by Anna Marie Gott. And our final speaker is Andy Caldwell.
Yes, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Chair Hart, members of board, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Well, thank you so much. Chair Hart, members of the board, thank you for giving me this time to speak. Just want to introduce myself. I'm Tom Shaw. I'm a physician in Santa Maria, with training in trial medicine gastroenterology. And I've been a gastroenterologist in Santa Maria for the last 26 years. And I'm just coming here as a concerned physician on behalf of all my patients, and as a concerned citizen on behalf of my friends and neighbors in Santa Barbara County. My proposal is that the shelter in place ordered by the governor, I think, was a very good first step in flattening the curve for the state at large in terms of the viral infection. But unfortunately, as you can see from some of the graphs I've forwarded to Chair Hart, the curve for Santa Barbara County is not flattening as well as we like. And I think we need to do more. My proposal of doing more is by mandating a proposal that is similar to the face mask order that was enacted by San Diego County, just, I believe, as of Monday. And I think it's consistent with some of the best practices of some of the countries in the world that have the best, have been performing the best in terms of controlling this virus. I was just wondering what your thoughts are, Chair Hart or members of board. Were you able to review some of the notes, some of the emails I forwarded to you?
Dr. Shaw, we don't do a dialogue at public comment, but you have communicated, I think, to all of us about these items, and we'll respond in a different format, in a different forum. Thank you, though.
Sure. Thank you so much.
Thank you for commenting.
Thank you.
Supervisor Hartman?
I just wanted to ask, we're doing daily press conferences, and will these models and all be discussed sometime this week?
Yes, we are doing, continuing with the press conferences, and we have demonstrated some models, but, and we've even made videos of face covering. And we want to really make a clear distinction between masking and face covering. We really want to reserve the N95s and surgical masks for our healthcare workers. So, for everyone else, we're talking about face covering. Yes, and that is a message that I believe yesterday Supervisor Hart demoed his, and we will continue to do that, to routinely remind everyone.
Thank you. We have additional public comment?
Yes, Chair Hart, members of the board, we will now go to Anna Marie Gott on the phone, to be followed by Andy Caldwell.
Good, good morning. My name is Anna Marie Gott, and I just wanted to make a few comments, not just about the county, but also about the city of Santa Barbara and the reports that are being presented on a daily basis for the news conference. I'd like to recommend that the, for the daily, the daily news conference, that you actually put a percentage of people that you believe are social distancing. I know that you believe right now that it's 50%, and how that data was derived from, or where it was derived from. I think if individuals had access to a link where they could actually see that information on a daily basis, that might be helpful. Also, I'd also like to just mention that we are not seeing any demographic information regarding race in any of the data that's been provided on a daily basis. And I think that would be very educational for individuals. I've personally witnessed in the city of Santa Barbara numerous parties and barbecues and a lot of issues with social distancing between certain ethnic groups. And I believe that a lot of information is not necessarily being distributed to certain populations. And it's very concerning, especially as some populations, actually, there's going to be more density in homes. And of course, we already know that density actually increases the spread of the disease. The other thing that I would also like to just comment on is social distancing and enforcement. In the city of Santa Barbara this weekend, I witnessed patios that were filled with people eating at restaurants. I also saw a number of barber shops and salons opened, and gym equipment used in our parks. And I'm just curious to find out, you know, what is the county's policy regarding police officers or county employees? If they see something, are they supposed to do something? Because I think that that is really one of the only ways that we're going to be able to stop the spread, especially in some of these businesses that are supposed to be closed down, or actually not having patio service of, you know, basically out in front of their restaurant. And when I mean patio service, I mean, I don't mean that they are serving individuals in the patio. I mean that the customers are purchasing food, and then they are choosing to sit in the patio to have their lunch, or their dinner, or their breakfast. And that's very, you know, disconcerting to actually look at, especially when it can be viewed from the street. And you know that police officers, as well as city or county employees, or even council members, have driven down Milpiss or State Street, and they've all witnessed it. You know, all they had to do was look to the right or to their left, and they could see all of this occurring on a daily basis.
Thank you, Ms. Gott. Your time is up.
Another question I have is regarding the recommendation of the county that everyone that's going to be outdoors is going to be wearing a mask. We're already hearing about grocery workers that are actually dying.
Thank you for commenting.
And that's, that's obviously a disadvantage, a lot of...
There you go. Thank you.
Chair Hart, members of the board, we will now go to our final speaker, Andy Caldwell.
Chair Hart, members of the board, Andy Caldwell, representing COLAP. First off, I've been sending you guys, all the board members, articles for almost a month now, from leading epidemiologists and data analysts from institutions such as Stanford, MIT, Harvard, and the like, that for weeks have said that the number of, the infection rate, hospitalization rate, and all that has been severely overestimated. Well, just two days ago, doctor, the two doctors in the, of the United States that have been at the lead of this, Dr. Fauci and Dr. Birx, and who have been relying on this IHME model, it was cut by 46%, 46% on average. And I don't see that, I think your health director glossed over that. And here's the point. On the charts, we've been asking for information and data on these charts for weeks. Well, they finally did it, but she started on April 1st. All of your charts have an April 1st start date. This pandemic didn't start on April 1st. The California had its first recorded case back in January. Why isn't she showing you, instead of showing you future projections, why isn't she showing you actual data in time from the first diagnosed case in Santa Barbara County, in terms of hospitalization, ICU, and the like? Supervisor Williams, you were completely right on. And Supervisor Adam, your job is to go ahead and let the health director prepare for the worst, but your job, starting a couple of weeks ago, was to balance that information. But you're not including any balanced information in these presentations. Brian Gable is somebody that I had on my show. He's a data analyst. He sent you data that shows that he believes that we already peaked in Santa Barbara County. We have already peaked. And in fact, people are believing now that New York has already peaked. And again, this information isn't in there. Their projections are off by orders of magnitude. There is no reason to believe we can't social distance at work. Why don't you treat your constituents as responsible adults? Finally, I sent you an article from the Los Angeles Times that Governor Newsom's administration has ordered positive COVID-19 diagnosed patients into nursing homes. That right there is a death sentence. You want to talk about something that's going to spike the numbers, send positive people into nursing homes where you have the highest vulnerable populations at risk. There's another issue, plastic bags.
Mr. Caldwell, Caldwell, your time is up, too.
I testified before seven years ago and published an article that viruses can go into reusable bags. Nevertheless, you banned plastic bags. Well, now stores are banning reusable bags.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell.
Where's your action on that?
Thank you very much.
The bottom line here is, we cannot withstand this going into July, let alone November. I don't think we're going to make it to May. And I think it's time for you to start balancing things and to pressure the governor to look at the projection, the number of infection and the infection rate, and let's get honest numbers from day one.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell. Sorry that your time is up. Three minutes goes fast. All right.
Chair Hart?
Yes, Supervisor Adam?
If I could provide maybe a little perspective, I do have another question for Dr. Domenoso. Doctor, I assume you're still there?
Yes, I'm here.
This isn't, do you agree with me that this isn't going to go away even after November?
That the coronavirus or the COVID-19 virus, it will not go away? Is that your question?
Correct.
As a virus, I believe that it will be, it will be present in our community, yes. In this form, I'm not sure. Mutated, perhaps?
Well, let's hope it doesn't mutate to its own benefit. But for the purposes of this discussion, it just stays the same. So, in terms of just kind of perspective and calibration for all of us, so that if it's not going to go away, the future of every person on this planet, at least to the point of herd immunity, includes either effective vaccination or survival of the disease, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, I think what we need to do is think about this for a while. I think as Supervisor Williams was talking about earlier, having a discussion, and I don't think it's an appropriate time to do it now, but we need to do it soon. And I think we all need to talk to people that we rely on. I know all of us have people that we rely on to advise us on these type of matters, because none of us is an expert in this stuff. But we are nevertheless elected officials, and we do need to balance those needs, as Supervisor Williams was talking about earlier. So, we need to have this discussion of surge management, as Supervisor Hartman put it. And then, the post-surge management, you know, the surge management, I get the strategy for surge management, but it's, it's almost like it's become like a permanent condition, and, you know, I don't think it's sustainable. And I think we need to start thinking at this point of a time, sooner than later, when we start relaxing the surge management strategy and enter into more of a long term, given the fact that we're either going to have to, we're going to have to achieve herd immunity one way or another, either through vaccination or survival. And... And, you know, I think people have, in their, in their, their terror, you know, some people are in full-on terrors about this, which is explainable, expectable, understandable. I get it. If you're a person who's feeling vulnerable to this disease, but, you know, I think for policy's sake, we need to understand, there has to be a recognition that we're part of nature, and we're not going to escape, you know, the biological need to attain some type of a resistance to this disease, because it's always going to be with us from now on. And we'll be lucky to some extent if it doesn't mutate to its own benefit and become even more effective at moving from person to person, or any other method of perpetuating itself, which, you know, that's what it's doing, it's just perpetuating itself. So I think we need to have a discussion here, and after we have that discussion, we need to be able to contact the governor, because, you know, all of this policy, almost all of this policy emanates from the state at this point. There's some policy that seems to be trickling out of Washington, but the state seems to be where our public health takes the lead on, and I look forward to having this discussion sooner than later.
All right, are there any other comments or questions from the board? I think it is important to recognize that we are in the middle of a public health crisis, and that the direction and the advice of the medical professionals remains the same, to social distance, stay home. If you must go out, limit your trips out. If you go out, use a mask to protect others. You may be asymptomatic, but have the virus and could be spreading it. Don't touch your face if you possibly can. Wash your hands regularly, disinfect surfaces. And if you are feeling sick, isolate yourself at home and contact your medical professional and seek additional advice if you, if your symptoms worsen. They're simple steps, they're important steps. They are working to stop this virus, and I think today's presentation was a great opportunity to see in a physical way, visual way, the results of the differences in the effectiveness of social modeling on the ability to flatten the curve and preserve the medical system that we need to be available for patients. So... Chair Hart? Yes, Supervisor Lavenino?
I think it's a, it's a good time for me to comment also on the job that you're doing, representing us as board members. I know it's not easy, you have the 4:30 daily press conference, and you probably got sworn in as chair not knowing that you were going to be called upon so much, but I just appreciate the time and the energy and the focus that you've displayed, and the calm manner in which you're trying to get out public health messaging. So I just appreciate it, and I know my other board members feel the same way.
Thank you, Supervisor Lavenino.
Amen.
I just want to say that I am continuously amazed and impressed by the professionalism and the commitment of every person in the county team that is working day and night, and all of the people in the medical profession in our community, you know, who are on the front line of this, the first responders, who are the very first people to roll when they get a call on 911, to go to a patient who is in danger. And we are all trying to do the best we can with not enough information and not enough resources, but the response from the community in particular to the recommendations that we're hearing is astounding and really heart-affirming, and if we continue to be together as a community, trusting each other, working with each other, being kind to each other, we're going to prevail through this. And then we'll be able to have conversations about the future in the future. So, thank you for that. Yes?
I just, I had to add, Supervisor Lavenino, you don't see the county leaders out here in the room, but it has been a month, and I see some tired eyes, and I hope people will be taking care of themselves, and anything we can do as a board to support you, we want to do it, because this is a long haul.
Thank you. Well, that concludes, well, we need a motion. Would someone like to make a motion?
I move that we accept the report.
Thank you. Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Lavenino?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Chair Hart?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all for being here today.